The zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five to order all persons interested and affected by the actions of the zoning board of appeals. You are hereby notified pursuant to section eleven of chapter forty eight, the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and all amendments there, too, that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held today, Wednesday, September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five, at times indicated. The zoning board of appeals public hearing will be held by remote participation methods. Public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised live via Xfinity Channel eighteen or High Definition Channel one zero seven two. It may also be accessed via government access channel livestream on the Town of Barnstable's website. HTTPS colon slash slash barnstable dot cablecast dot TV slash internet channel slash watch dash now. Real time access to zoning board of appeals meeting is available by utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided. Public comment can be addressed to zoning board of appeals by utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and entering the meeting ID. The Zoom link is HTTPS colon slash slash town of barnstable dash US dot zoom dot US slash J slash eight one nine five seven seven six two six eight one, or calling eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine and entering the meeting ID eight one nine five seven seven six two six eight one. Applicants represented and individuals required or entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals may appear remotely and may participate through accessing the link or telephone number provided. Documentary exhibits and or visual presentation should be submitted in advance of the meeting to anna dot Brigham at town dot barnstable dot MA dot US, so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. Copies applications are available for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two or emailing anna dot Brigham at town dot barnstable dot MA dot US. I will call the meeting to order with introduction of board members, Herb Bodenseek.
Present.
Paul Pennard.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
Larry Hurwitz is absent. Manny Alves.
Present.
Rodney Tavano is absent. Natalie Pittinger.
Present.
And I am Jacob Dewey. All right, notice of recording, this meeting of zoning board appeals is being recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable's government access channel. In accordance with MGL Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, so to please make their presence known. Seeing none, we have no old business. Oh, actually, we have minutes. We have minutes from July twenty third, two thousand and twenty five, and August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five to approve. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Oh, second.
All right, roll call vote on approving the minutes. Herb Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
Favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
Natalie Pittinger.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So the minutes are approved. Old business, we did not have any today, so we're going on to new business. Appeal number two thousand and twenty five dash zero two six one hundred three Long Beach Road LLC has applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash one thirty one four D two Craigville Beach District Use Regulations and section two forty dash one thirty one seven E Long Beach Short Beach. The applicant is seeking to demolish and rebuild a preexisting nonconforming garage. The proposal will decrease the nonconforming side yard setback from the existing one point one feet to the proposed six feet and will increase the gross floor area from twenty eight hundred and thirty seven square feet to a proposed three thousand twenty eight square feet, an increase of six point seven percent. Subject property is located at one oh three Long Beach Road, Centerville, Massachusetts, as shown on assessors map two zero five as parcel zero one seven. It's located in the Craigville Beach District CBD and the Long Beach Short Beach LB SB Neighborhood Overlay District. So sitting on this will be our regular members, myself, Herb, Paul, Aaron, and Manny, do you want to sit on this?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Brackett, I believe you're taking this away, is that right?
It's Zach Posinski. How are you, sir?
Oh, good. Go ahead.
Again, for the record, Zach, no worries. For the record, Zach Posinski, professional engineer, bracket engineering, also certified flood zone manager here this evening on behalf of the applicant, the one oh three Long Beach LLC. May I share my screen at this time?
Yeah, I think Anna couldn't.
Yeah, I can give it to him. One second.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
All right, you're all set.
Thank you. So again, as mentioned, we're here this evening on behalf of the applicants to request special permits under sections two forty dash one thirty one dash four D two and sections two forty dash one thirty one seven E to raise and demo an existing garage building on the property and also alter the existing single family house. So the existing property is a preexisting nonconforming lot, thirty thousand square feet, currently comprised of a single family house, four bedrooms, centered on the lot, and then the existing detached garage in the front of the property. So as mentioned, the property sits within the Craigville Beach District and then the Long Beach Short Beach Overlay Districts. Also sits within a FEMA designated flood zone. And then natural heritage is on the south part of the lot along with the coastal beach. To the north of the property is also the Centerville River and then Nantucket Sound to the south of us. The existing structures based on assessors records were created in nineteen forty eight and predate zoning. So as mentioned, the applicants are looking to raise or demo the existing structure in the front of the property. Currently, it sits about four feet off of the right of way to Long Beach and about a foot off of the side yard setback. We're looking to bring that structure back onto the property to meet the front yard setback, be greater than that. Currently, under the zoning, it's a twenty foot front yard setback, and we're proposing twenty four and a half feet to the front and then increasing or improving the side yard setback up to six feet, so gaining another five feet on the side of the property over here. As mentioned in the application, we are looking to increase, slightly increase, the gross floor area on the property. Overall, we're looking for a six point seven percent request. As mentioned, the existing structures have a gross floor area of twenty eight hundred and thirty seven square feet. We're looking to increase that to three thousand two hundred and eighty square feet or an increase of a hundred and ninety one square feet. Again, this is to accommodate a proposed ADU on top of the rebuilt garage unit for the property. As mentioned, the property does sit within a velocity zone out here, so currently the structures are prefirm structures. If projects approved, this would improve the overall stability or flood compliance of the structures. The new garage building would be elevated up. All habitable space would be elevated up above with the new garage space in the ADU up above, further protecting either residents and the abutters in the area. Proposed project won't increase any intensity as the existing house is four bedrooms. We're looking to reconfigure the internal part of the existing house and take out a bedroom. So the proposed overall intensity use of the lot would still be a four bedroom house on this. The property a few years ago received a deferral to upgrade the onsite septic system as the town will be bringing sewer down here under the Phase Two. So we are maintaining, again, the septic compliance, so four bedrooms on the lot, therefore not increasing any nitrogen loading with the addition of the proposed ADU on the property. Again, will it be improving the flood zone resiliency of the property and the butters by building a new velocity zone garage building on the property? There will be no impacts on the ecological resources or the historic structure. Existing structure will be dormered for the increase in modifications inside the existing structure. Elevations were submitted. We've been working with the developers builder, Randy Byrne of Chilton Development, and the intent here is to keep the ridge lines of the structures in line with the existing structure, so not to have something that seems overmassing or out of compliance of what's in the area. And if we look at the area again here, you can see that this is a very modest house compared to some of the other houses in the area. Our intent is to, again, main structure will be staying where it is. Garage would be centered back here, not impacting any view corridors. Actually, improving the view corridor down this westerly side of the property and then maintaining the existing view corridor out to Nantucket Sound on the east side of the property. So I believe we've met the intent of the bylaw through that. Again, the project won't have any impacts on coastal water quality. Four bedrooms, four bedrooms with the intent of, once the town has the sewer system connecting to this sewer in the area. Again, it will also protect the resource areas by building a flood compliant structure, which would be less likely to be damaged and have debris go out into the Centerville River or affect any of the abutting properties in the area. Again, human life protection for the property by being able to build a structure that's up above the velocity zone. This is hopefully, if there, hopefully, we don't have a storm event, but in the event that we do, this would be a structure that hopefully wouldn't be maintained and be able to be habitable again and provide housing in the area. Going up, we believe we're meeting and preserving the natural flood control for the area. We're not looking, we don't think the project will result in any increased velocities or deflection of wave waters towards abutting properties. Again, another improvement over what's existing there on the lot. Again, project did go through conservation, did receive an order of conditions as part of the approval. So we do believe that is, again, another benefit for the area and believe we've met all the required special permit requirements. And I'll turn it back over for questions.
All right. Thank you, Seth. Appreciate it. Does any board members have a question for the applicant?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Natalie.
Okay, so I wasn't sure, like, that existing garage is literally down on the sidewalk. And are you just moving it up a little bit toward the house or are you attaching it to the house?
It's going to be a detached structure. I'll share my screen again. So we're moving it back about twenty feet or so, or twenty three feet back towards, closer towards the house. So we're going to be improving, improving the setbacks off of the street line.
Okay, all right, so it's. So will this, will the, the upper part of the garage be an ADU again, or is this going to be part of the living space from the house?
It's, it's part of a new ADU and new living space up above, so that's why there's a request for the increase of the hundred and ninety one square feet.
Okay. Um, that's it. Okay, that's it. So what about like a driveway going in there? Is there, will it be a paved driveway coming up from that sidewalk?
That would be pervious, similar to what's out there. That was something with the Conservation Commission. So it'll be a pervious driveway out in the front of the property.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's it.
Other board members have questions?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm struggling here, too. Go ahead, Manny.
One of the findings we're required to make relates to lot coverage. And I see that you, you say that that driveway will be pervious, so I guess that won't count towards lot coverage. But you're proposing an addition to the house. I was just wondering, what is the current lot coverage and what will it be post construction?
Yep, so currently, under the zoning district, we're allowed to have a lot coverage of thirty six hundred square feet. It's currently at two thousand and seventy one and it's going up to twenty two twenty. So it's still below what would be allowed maximum per the zoning requirements for their underlying zoning district.
And if you were to make that driveway impervious, would that, I'm wondering if that's the reason that, or was that something the Conservation Commission demanded?
Well, it's an existing gravel driveway out there, so we're maintaining. It's just because we're moving the structure further back and the access to get to the front of it. We did talk to the Conservation Commission, and if the board wanted, we could always shrink the driveway down a bit to maintain what's there today from a gravel in front of the property. The stormwater runoff is already controlled onsite with an onsite leach and catch basin in the front driveway. So, and we are installing roof drainage on the property, so we don't see any impacts from stormwater runoff affecting anybody in the area.
It's keeping that driveway, and I'm talking about the piece where the garage currently sits. It's keeping it pervious condition from the Conservation Commission?
Yes, yeah, it was keeping it pervious, yep.
Okay, and I also read some place, an unrelated question, you were waiting approval from the Health Department. Has that come through?
So we have a four bedroom deferment for this already, so if we get approval through here, we'll be speaking with the board about that as well. Because it's four bedrooms to four bedrooms and the, the thing is the sewer system through here. They were granted approval on this property a few years ago to do some internal renovations, and that's when they were given their deferment to maintain the onsite septic. We weren't allowed to upgrade it to a new Title V compliant septic because of the sewer coming through. So we don't see any issues with the Health Department because it's a four bedroom house staying with a four bedroom house on the lot.
I guess that's my question. If, in fact, you're keeping the same number of bedrooms, why the need for the Health Department approval?
It's just because it's two structures on the lot, so we still have to go back and ask for deferment again for it.
Notwithstanding the fact that you're not increasing the number of bedrooms?
Correct, yep, everything's staying the same.
And I guess the obvious question, one last question is the why. Could you put the ADU in the garage where it currently sits or?
Within the existing structure as is?
Yeah.
We'd have to demo the structure anyway with it because of the flood plain requirements and the age of the structure. It's a nineteen forty eight structure, so meeting the new building code requirements and then the velocity zone requirements for breakaway walls and all that, the existing structure, we couldn't maintain the existing structure as is and then build on top of it. So this also gives us the ability to improve the setbacks with it.
What's, what's the area of this lot? I'm looking at section six, which talks about, I didn't see that anywhere, and I was trying to understand what the lot coverage, you mentioned a number I didn't understand.
Yep. Could I share my screen again?
Sure.
Yep, so it's a thirty thousand square foot lot. And then law coverage for the, and building coverage, so law coverage, we're allowed thirty six thousand square feet. And then on building coverage, we're allowed twenty seven fourteen. So with the proposed existing, we're at nineteen, and then with the proposed building coverage, we're at just over two thousand square feet. So still well below the twenty seven fourteen. And then the lot coverage with the rest of the impervious coverage is thirty six that were allowed per the zoning, and we're still well below that at twenty two twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
I just, is this in, in the V zone or are we, no, we're not in a flood zone? We are in a flood zone.
We are, we are in a V zone, and that's why it's V zone construction for the new garage building.
Okay, so is the new garage higher or it's the same height as the existing building?
Nope, it's going to be taller going up with the structure because of it.
Maybe.
Because one of the regulations is in the V zone, we can't increase south facing building surfaces. So is it not increasing at all?
The square footage went up by seven square feet just because of the requirements with that. But it's, we're going vertical with it, we're not going horizontal with it, and we're making a flood compliant structure.
Well, I'm just looking at the, our bylaw. Two, two eight, two forty one thirty one. On, it says, if you're in the V zone, you can't increase that. Are you asking for a release of that?
We're asking for a waiver for that for the seven square feet.
I don't think that would be a special permit.
Because we're asking for the increase because currently it's four twelve on the structure. And it went up by seven square feet just because of the nominal dimensions of the, of that. I mean, we could talk with the builder and shrink that down to meet four twelve again.
To objectively capture all things.
Okay, I mean, I, I just, that's the way the regulation was written, so I'm just, you know, I'm not making that up, that, that's something that was put in there to fall into this special permit.
Which section are you reading from, Jake?
I'm in two forty one thirty one four Craigville Beach District Use Regulations, and then they're asking for B two, correct?
D.
Sorry, D, D two.
D two.
Yeah, and so then under A, section eight, the last section there.
Yeah, interesting. I read that, and then there's another provision that talks about a twenty five percent max in, in, but I guess that's.
No, in number three, you mean, oh.
Four.
But three also, I think we have a problem because they're trying to increase the gross floor area, correct? Because we're not maintaining.
But three is only for the demolition of a single family residence. They're not doing that.
For voluntary demolition, but aren't they?
But it's not a single family residence that's demolishing, is it? I, I, I thought of that, too. I didn't think.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we spoke with Mr. Flores about that, and he said that the increase would be covered under the twenty five percent special permit. That was our understanding after meeting with him about it.
And there's section four.
And, right, and then the intensity use, because we went from four bedrooms, we were initially looking to maintain the four and put the fifth bedroom above this ADU, but then the intensity use requirement, so that's when, after speaking with Mr. Flores, we went to remove the bedroom out of the existing house and maintain the intensity use of the same. And that the, the six percent was under the twenty five percent increase. So that was our, our understanding after me doing a profile with him.
Yeah, I actually don't understand section eight.
Yeah, I mean, I think seven and eight are, seven, seven is for our discretion, which, again, I'm trying to understand these elevations. So the, the, the building is turning, so the garage doors will face the street, is that correct?
Correct.
And the height difference between the, the top of the ridge on the existing structure, the top of the ridge on the proposed structure is what?
I'd have to get that to you, but it's probably going to be about ten feet higher going up because of the living and then going up with the flood plain or twelve feet higher, yep. I'm trying again, if I share in the screen here, we're keeping the ridge line similar to what the existing structure ridge line is on the house. Because we didn't want something here that was more taller or wasn't taller than the existing structure and keeping it in harmony of the existing buildings out there.
Yeah, but I think you've got a sightline problem down the road.
So if we look at the, like, the street view, we're still lower than the existing structures next door. And we could get those building heights for the board and talk and get that. We're still going to be in harmony with what's there. And the visual corridors that are here going out are still maintained to the left and improved on the right hand side with the relocation of the garage.
I mean, the, the, the bylaw says to maintain or enhance views, and I don't know that going up twelve feet could possibly maintain or enhance.
Well, from the visual standpoint, if somebody's on the street, they're not seeing over the building as it is because we're down below grade. You can see how the house is up higher. We're maintaining the ridge line that's there, so the view isn't affected to the left with it, and then it will be improved to the right when we look at the site plan. Because we're going to be increasing it from one foot to, we're gaining an extra five feet of view down this corridor through this side. And then the main, the main view corridor is this whole side. We initially had looked at trying to propose an addition and putting the ADU on the side of the building. So then looking at that, then that would have cut into that thirty two feet. So then, that's when we came back and said, well, if we redevelop this, we can improve, maintain the site view corridors and then improve the flood resiliency of the structure for the garage building.
Okay, do any other board members have questions?
That's how I understand his answer. Sorry, Jake. With the ADU on top, the height of the garage will be similar to the existing house? Similar height?
Correct, yep.
But the existing house is sitting up on a, on a raised land, correct?
Yeah, there's a slight grade right in front of the house because you can, that retaining wall that we were just looking at. So you can see there's a small landscape retaining wall, about a foot or so, foot and a half higher. So we're keeping the garage down because of the access through here and then just bringing it up to meet the flood plain requirements.
So your point in terms of maintaining the view is if someone's sitting, looking at that picture, someone's standing in front of the garage currently, they have no view. If you push it down, you're not decreasing the view. You're actually improving it because you're adding a little buffer next to the proper, the neighbor's property line. Is that, is that what I heard you say?
Yep.
But the whole structure is going up from what it existing is, correct? You're adding a second story to the existing structure?
We're adding the ADU on top of the.
No, I'm talking to main structure, the main house.
No.
No, the main house is, no, the main house has just dormers, the ridge line is staying the same, and then everything else has been designed so the back of it's all below the existing ridge line. So we're not adding anything vertically up on the ridge line of the house.
So the top ridge line will stay exactly the same height of the house?
Yep, of the, on the main house, so we're not affecting anything over the top of the house either.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just a comment for the board, but this, this isn't, I've always, I don't understand what section eight asks for. And it would have been helpful, did you discuss that specifically with Mr. Flores?
Yeah, we talked about the roof heights and everything else and our understanding after talking with him, it was more of like the pedestrian access up and down and what people have the ability when they're driving up and down the street and the corridors going through. So that's why when we looked at the site plan, maintaining the access through this, because, I mean, across the street, again, if we would turn around, small little cottage, we're not affecting their view with what's there. And then anybody that's walking or driving down Long Beach, they still have the same visual view corridors on the sides of the house or they're increased with the increased side yard setback. That wasn't really a concern.
Yeah, it's just the words don't help. It says, it should not increase south facing building surfaces so as to limit the adverse effect of increasing elevation. You're clearly increasing the elevation and you're putting another level on top of the garage. And, and frankly, I, I don't know how the, uh, uh, the enforcement officer, Mr. Flores, reads that.
Well, Manny, I think he was referring to seven. He's talking about the views, but number eight is clear, like, that south facing surface can't change from what it is currently.
And, and, and that, I'm getting my geography confused here. South facing is, is facing the river. Is that right?
South facing is towards Nantucket Sound.
Right, towards the.
Just going out this way.
Okay, so, so, okay.
So the, whatever square footage that is, that, that gable end there cannot change from what it is currently?
Hey, can I, this is Randy from Chilton Development. Can you guys hear me?
Go ahead.
I, I think what they mean by increasing elevation or velocity of the floodwater, so I think they're talking about that the self facing width, width of the, not the height of the garage, the width of the garage can't get bigger because that would affect the floodwater from flowing in and out. So the width of the existing garage and the width of the new garage are the same. We're not increasing width. When they say, it says increasing elevation of velocity of floodwater. It's not the elevation of the house, it's the elevation.
No, but before you get the, sorry to interrupt, but before, stop at the ore. I understand what you're saying about velocity of floodwaters. It says, limit the adverse effect of increasing elevation.
Will be the elevation of the water in the flood zone. You're, you're trying not to, it's not a height question, it's a width question. Because you don't, the water wants to flow in and out unaffected by either elevation or velocity, meaning that you're not going to raise the water elevation because you've increased the self. So if you made it wider, it's going to be like a dam when the water flows in. But now that it's the same width, the water will flow in and out the same. So the elevation of the water or the velocity of the water won't change. It's not the elevation of the structure, it's the elevation of the water, floodwaters. The ore and velocity go together.
I got you.
But it says do not increase south. But it says do not increase south facing building surfaces. So it's. The so whole surface, the whole building surface, I would say that's the whole that whole gable end cannot increase in size.
I don't think it increases in size relative to. The floodplain elevation of elevation sixteen. It gets taller above floodplain, but not below floodplain.
And that's not, but that's not how the bylaw was written. It says just we just can't increase. So it just needs to be the same as that gable end. Which I think Seth said you guys could do. Did that just has to maintain the same size? I mean, V is refer V zone is referring to wind, I believe as well, right? It's not just floodwaters.
No, I mean, from a building construction standpoint, in the building code, I mean, we have for an elevated structure, you go up with it. So in the velocity zone, we meet the building code requirements for coastal flood resilient structure. So if we leave the structure here, the water hits it, deflects off of it. The new structures have flood vents for slow moving water. And if it's a. Fast moving water, the structure is designed so that the water. Goes through the building and uh through the walls and out, so it doesn't deflect the water. So that it's an improvement and doesn't raise the elevation like Mr. Byrne was just saying. And it's a improvement to our from the floodplain standpoint here. So from a detrimental steam.
Anna, the relief being sought here to to for us to waive that, it would have to be a variance, correct?
Um. I don't think it's possible to get a variance. Um, I maybe some information from Brian Florence might be helpful.
I mean, it, you know, I I don't know what the intent of that of that was, but. Again, the way I read it, I just I don't. I think it's saying that 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 gable end has to maintain the same. So the surface can't increase, but. I I don't know.
I had a conversation with the Cape Cod Commission to kind of go over the DP DCPC regulations with it. And our understanding of this is when there was put into effect, it was to prevent structures. That you can see we're very similarly done down there rest of the way down the neighborhood. So these all the so these structures were granted building permits prior to the DCPC going in. Where they went sideways. They were preexisting nonconforming structures. They met the special permit requirements at the time. So because they maintained the side yard setbacks, but their massing and everything grew. And they didn't go up because of the velocity zone requirements at the time and the flood mapping. Since this time, their whole capes been remapped two thousand fourteen with new flood maps, new flood elevations, and everything's gone up. So we're stuck between the floodplain requirements on this, and I think we've designed it in a way that. Maintains the character, doesn't increase our the structure within the view corridors. It's been designed to meet the floodplain requirements, which was another DCPC um concern at the time when these structures were all being built. And when the town had asked the Cape Cod Commission to step in back then. So our understanding with this, yep.
Yeah, if I'm following this conversation, eh eh eh, what you're saying is back, I'm arguing, I think your colleague said that. That section eight is talking about width. Because literally the bylaw says the board has to find that the proposed alteration in or expansion. Does not increase the south facing building surfaces. If you're going up, you're increasing the building surface. But you're saying that that section for technical reasons. Is intended to mean. The width of the building can't expand, but it's not referring to height.
But that's in number six, Manny. Don't you think like that they're satisfying number six where they're? I get that. That does not increase flood hazards in the neighborhood. That's new structure would not do that, but.
Well, but then it's it's kind of duplicative in eight when it's talking about increasing the elevation or velocities of floodwaters again, right? I mean, flood hazards, floodwaters. Eh, this is very technical and 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 I think I like your suggestion. It would be good to get. Clarity from 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 Mr. Florence on what that means because read literally, it says you cannot increase south facing building for surfaces.
Correct. That's where I got stuck.
Yeah.
So.
And 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 I hear you. I I heard your answer and and with with your answer in mind as I reread it. When it talks about so as to avoid the adverse effect of increasing elevation or velocity of floodwaters. And maybe the width piece makes sense, but that's not what it says.
No. We're good at finding bylaws that are complicated or. I don't have any consequences in there or something. Um, well, let's continue. Let's do public comment, which I. And 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 then maybe we continue this and we get Commissioner Florence to either give us a memo or come to the next meeting and and we can just. Clarify it because I don't think it would make sense for us to to. You know, I don't think we can really give you the special permit, neither. If we did, we. I mean, that wouldn't be satisfied there, I don't think. Um, in the under the current plans. But let's open for public comment. Is there is there anyone here from the public to speak to this? No, seeing none. We didn't hear anything. Um. Have you guys reached out to any of your butters?
They were all notified through their certified mail process.
Did anyone reach out to them to give us some some favorable on number seven?
We can touch base with them. Mr. Byrne and I'll touch base with them before the next meeting.
I mean, I think it would be for me, it would be really helpful if if there was, you know, if some of the butters on that street said, oh, yeah, that doesn't affect the way the view is. Appreciated there. I mean, I don't live there. I don't know how people, you know, use their views on either side of there. And if this does or does not affect or it. Truly does enhance it and people are going to be excited that there's a a laneway down um in between the two buildings. So I I think it would be helpful if. If someone.
Listen, Chairman, I just have a thought on that, and that's not necessarily the applicant's job. The the note the butters were notified.
It's I'm not looking for negative feedback. I'm looking for them to have some positive because I can't make a discretionary decision. Of whether this enhances the views or not. They need to prove that to us. If if you.
I I don't think there's. Yep, well, I I think.
There's if you feel comfortable that it moving one foot to the left is enhancing the view.
That's not one foot. It's five feet. So it's an additional five foot lane of view that's going to be added. I just don't think that's the applicant's job is to is to. Bring positive feedback from neighbors who were notified from the. Building permit process. I mean, so that's just my my opinion on it. I I appreciate what you're asking for. I just don't think that's the applicant's job personally.
This is Mr. Byrne again. Um, so the homeowner has spoken with both the butters across the street and next door and. You know, I believe they had nothing negative to say and I'm I'm assuming they haven't sent anything into the board or. Uh, have commented, but they were in favor of what we're doing, um, not in writing, but they they do know the application was being submitted. If that helps.
Yeah, I I agree with that. I mean, looking, yeah, and looking at looking at this map that's on the screen here, one eleven shows almost the identical. Improvement that one oh three is proposing, and we can't see the elevations from here because. It's not giving us that view, but it's set back to where one oh three is hoping to, you know. Relocate the garage. They're moving it five feet from the current setback closer on their own property and virtually again. From the roof, from the angle we're looking at, it appears like there's two doggy windows almost on an elevated second floor. So again, I can't speak to it because we can't see it from here, but it's virtually going to look identical to the neighbor at one eleven. So again, I I just. I I certainly appreciate getting clarification from uh um the Commissioner Florence, um, but I I, you know, I don't. I just don't think it's the applicant's job to doubly notify uh on a butter per se, in my opinion. That's all. No, I I I think I agree. I think we can infer. For the from the proposed change, creating that lane, adding five feet on 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 the property line. Uh, in in. In fact, negative inference that the neighbors were notified and. Nobody objected. I think that may be enough to say that at least it maintains. I'm not sure. Possibly enhances the views. Yeah, and and again, one more thing, if you do go on to Google Earth and look at one eleven, it is exactly what is being proposed here. And I I'm not saying that it's that it's right or wrong. I'm just using um what what the characteristics of the neighborhood. Uh, certainly show and one eleven has a has a two car garage, south facing with a elevated ADU above it or. Some apartment type living space. I don't know what it is, but. Hey, you can make the argument, Aaron, that the person across the street. Currently can see over the garage. Once you put a floor above it, that 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 line of sight could be gone. I mean, but I I I hear you that it's not the 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 applicant's. Uh, uh, there's a reason we the town notifies the neighbors, right? And the neighbors can come forward and and I hear you. I mean, I I think the board.
But but anyway, we're not notifying the neighbors on the other side of the Centerville River. Then can see Nantucket Sound, right?
They're not seeing it anyway, Chairman. I hate to tell you, on the other side of the Centerville River, there's a house. Right directly across the street, Craigville Beach Road, that's going to obstruct any view of the river. From across the other side. That's not that's not applicable.
You don't think the house straight across the river with a dock can see can see out to Nantucket Sound?
I think I I certainly think they potentially, but you're you're having to cross over. Two two houses and a road, so I don't again, I it's possible, but are you talking about the the house on the other side of Craigville Beach Road or literally across the river?
Across straight across. Right across Centerville River.
Yeah, no, no, that's not.
Straight up to Nantucket Sound.
That's not our. I I was actually thinking of a house across the street. Yeah, across the street is one thing. Across the river, I'm sorry, you're you're I'm not. That's not applicable.
Again, guys, we got to go back to the bylaw as it was written. These are not. We don't. We don't have discretion here. It says maintain or enhance views in Nantucket Sound and or Centerville River. Where applicable in according to.
And 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 they're and they're doing that. The the they're not raising it over the the current elevation of the house of the main structure. It's not getting any taller than what's currently there. And they're in fact, they're adding five feet of view space.
Along the. About the lane view next to the structure. You're talking about gaining that that lane view is very wide right now for someone to see over a small garage. It's going up twelve feet. You don't think that's.
Again, but it's going to be, but it's it's closer positioned to the elevations of the current house. Because it's moving six feet to the left or right, depending on which way you look at it. So.
I mean, again, I'm just one vote, but I'm looking at the bylaw and making sure we can check that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Believe me, I think we still need clarification. I'm not the I'm not the I'm not dismissing that. I just think again, to be worried about. People across the river seems a little bit of of a stretch. When when the elevation of the current house is already in they're they're not touching that. They're not changing that whatsoever. All they're doing is taking a a one story garage, turning it a quarter, you know, moving it six feet in from the property line. Where it currently is at the one foot mark of the setback and making it now six six feet. So adding five feet, I guess, of of corridor space to Nantucket Sound and adding a, you know. And elevating it by a a story, no doubt. It's certainly going up, but it's not any higher than the current elevation of the house. But Aaron, if you take a straight line from across the street, increasing the height is gonna. Currently, you can see over the garage. Let's look at a straight line. It goes past the house. You have a view all the way to the sound. Okay, that there's there's a lane there that above the garage that does not touch the house. You have sight all the way across. So if you're on the second floor across the street or an elevation of some sorts, you can actually see above the garage. By adding another story to the garage, you're now blocking that. I don't believe you. I don't believe you are because again, you're still having to look over the top of the of the. Of the ridge line of the current house, which is even higher than the current state of the garage. I just, again, these are, I understand we need clarification on the bylaw. That's really what this comes down to. I it's not my concern. I don't think it's our concern per se here that whether or not, you know, that because I think I believe they are adding more space to Nantucket Sound than diminishing. That's my opinion. But I I certainly can appreciate getting clarification, so. I don't I and I and I also think we should leave uh public comment open at this point, keep the meeting open. Um, and um. And so we just asked the applicant if he would like to continue and and we can move on to the next case.
Um, other board members, did you have any questions or things that you'd like the applicant to work on or come back with? Natalie, Paul?
Yeah. Not really.
Well, I'm I'm a co-sign.
Okay.
I just don't see this as a as a huge ask. I really don't, given the fact that it's gonna it's a it's a, you know, the structure nineteen forty eight.
It's not our discretion if it's a huge ask. We have a very specific list in the bylaw that we need to check.
And I, yeah, and Jake, I, Chairman, I certainly appreciate that and certainly want clarification, whether or not they're talking about velocity of the water. Or the, you know, or the height factor of, you know, is affecting the the visual per se. We don't, you know, that's where we're. You know, wrestling with the language of the bylaw. You and you said it yourself that we have a a very inept way of finding. You know, poorly written zoning sort of issues. So let's get some clarification and move on. We we can debate this till we're blue in the face. We're not going to get an answer tonight. So. Is the applicant willing to continue or not? Do you want us to vote or no?
And that's for continuance. I do see a hand raised.
Counselor, like you, public comment is open. What would you like? Counselor, you like you go ahead?
Hi, I'm going to make a public comment. Um, a a situation similar to this happened in Hyannis Port with a new house proposed uh down on the water uh near the pier. And several residents um opposed it. We didn't have the DCPC. We didn't have these regulations, just the historic commission. So everybody was um. Was basically that the the guy was given his permit to to not a permit, but the permission from the historic commission. That's all he needed. But I I'm telling you, I thi- I think what Jake is bringing up is important. Because I spoke at that. I'm several blocks from the water. I'm certainly not on the water. But when this individual builds his house, I'll lose my water view because it's kind of a precious little view that peaks through, you know, one story garages and this and that. So I think it's an important point. If this DCPC, you know, goes over to Short Beach Road. Then I think Chairman Dewey's point is well taken that, uh, you know, what will it do to that view? It it becomes. It it's very sensitive and, you know, I think uh the spirit and intent of this was to protect that. So I think it's a it's a good discussion. I think it's really good discussion. And I said, we had it right here um where I live and we all lost. Because we don't have uh the kind of zoning that you have here, which I think is unfortunate for other people. And it's, I think you really do need to pay attention to it. And and what are the effects of homes that maybe you don't think that they're going to be impacted, but I'm going to be impacted very severely when this house is built. Um, so a really good discussion. I hope you do more of it and really think again, uh, a few properties away. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lucky. All right, um. Seth, when would you like this to go out to? We have meetings. Uh, we have one in. Probably two weeks. What is the next date? Uh, it would be October eighth or October twenty second or November twelfth.
Mister Chair, just so everyone knows, um, October eighth uh has uh is a very heavy agenda. Um, so just so you know, and also if you could just review that section that you would like clarification. For that would be helpful to me.
Yep. So from the building commissioner, what we're asking him for clarity is on two forty one thirty one four.
D, D eight.
D, is it D?
Yep.
Two eight.
Thank you.
Uh, Seth says. Is October twenty second? Okay, that would be a Zoom meeting.
That'll work for us.
Okay.
The eighth is all available.
Yeah, we'll make sure Brian's available. I mean, if he's not, I think a memo is probably sufficient that he can just give us clarity in a memo, so he wouldn't have to come to the meeting. So I'll make a motion to continue uh item. Twenty twenty five dash zero two six to October twenty second, twenty twenty five. At seven oh one.
And I'll second.
And roll call vote, the public comment, a public hearing and the public comment is still open on this for the record. Um, roll call vote on the continuation. Um, her potency.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
Favor.
Benny Als.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. All right.
Thank you very much. We'll see you then.
Thank you so much. So moving on to appeal number. Twenty twenty five dash zero two seven, Alan and Don Burt have applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash ninety one H. Three, develop lot protection, demolition and rebuilding in nonconforming lots. The applicant seeks to rebuild on a lot where the prior home was destroyed by fire. The applicant is seeking zoning relief due to nonconforming lot size. The subject property is located at three twenty six Oakland Road, Hyannis, Massachusetts, on an assessor's map. two seven one as parcel zero eight four. It's located in the residence BRB zoning district. So sitting on this will be again, our regular members, myself, Herb, Paul, Aaron, and Natalie. Do you want to sit on this?
Sure.
All right. And I believe it's Mr. Hawk, Hocker?
Hocker, yep, we'll take it. So Shane Hocker, I'm the general contractor that was contracted by the Burt's. Back in July twenty twenty four, the existing structure on site had a buyer was a complete loss. And was subsequently removed from the property and debris. The site was cleaned up. We're proposing to reconstruct the two bedroom, one bath ranch style structure, nine hundred and thirty square feet, nine hundred and thirty six square feet with a full foundation, reusing the existing septic and utilities from the street. The setbacks are that we're looking for is because this was a preexisting nonconforming lot. The existing garage is going to remain on site. It's a half acre lot. The proposed lot coverage is nine point nine percent of twenty percent on there. The floor cover average is eight point one of thirty percent and the the only issue, I shouldn't even say issue, is that we put the height at fifteen. It's going to be less than that. The formal plans for this project haven't been formally drawn because we needed to make sure that we cleared the special permit because this is goes to buildability of the lot. So more or less we're putting back a very similar structure that was there. The structure that was there was a cottage that was added on to several times. This is putting in just a traditional, you know, ranch home in the same, roughly the same location as the preexisting structure.
Okay. Do you know when the the old structure was built? Do we have that?
I believe it was on the, I think it was in the fifties.
Okay, so predated zoning. Okay, just making sure.
And if you, I think it was fifty.
Yeah, that's fine. If it's whatever it's the fifties, it's predating zoning. Okay, does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I, yeah, I just have a clarification. It just on the the setup way, the the existing garage is going to stay. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that it looks like that has a a duric driveway. And then on the other side, it's going to be a paved driveway.
Correct.
It doesn't really go anywhere.
The paved driveway is existing what's there during construction. I'm anticipating that that's probably going to have to be you know, addressed or resurfaced at some point. But as it sits right now, there's an existing paved driveway.
Okay.
Just a quick question. If you're here because you don't have ten thousand square feet, if you had the the acreage, you would be able to do this as a right, so correct? I believe so. Yeah. Okay.
I mean, this is why two forty ninety one H was created, I think, for situations like this. So I'll open for public comment. Is anyone here to speak to this? We did not receive anything and nothing else came in, right?
Correct.
All right. So I'll make a motion to close public comment. Roll call vote. Herb, Boden Sieg?
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
I'm in favor, sorry.
Natalie Pittinger?
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So that closes public comment, brings back to the board for deliberation or someone wants to make, well, I guess we have to close the public hearing. Is there any more deliberation or thoughts on this? Okay, so now I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call vote. Herb, Boden Sieg?
In favor.
Paul Pennard?
Favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Natalie Pittinger?
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So if someone wants to make a findings on this, is anyone? Natalie, you want to do another one?
No. Oh, oh, it's so painful.
You did great last time.
Yeah. All right, I'll give it a whirl, but just start me when I I go off the tracks, okay?
Okay.
Okay. All right, so board number, okay, so I have to read the findings. All right, so number one, the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant or a special permit. Section two forty dash ninety one H three allows for the demolition and rebuilding of a residence on a nonconforming lot. Number two, site plan review is not required for single family residential dwellings. Three, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposed fulfills the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Number four, the proposed yard setbacks must be equal to or greater than the yard setbacks of the existing building, which I guess they are. The proposed setbacks will comply with required setbacks. The proposed lot coverage shall not exceed twenty percent or the existing lot coverage, whichever is greater. The proposed lot coverage is nine point nine percent, less than maximum. Number six, the floor area ratio shall not exceed zero point three zero or thirty percent of the existing floor area ratio of the structure being demolished, whichever is greater. The existing FAR is not applicable and the proposed FAR is eight point ten percent, which does not exceed the threshold. Number seven, the building height in feet shall not exceed thirty feet to the highest plate and shall contain no more than two and a half stories. The proposed height for the proposed dwelling is fifteen feet. Number eight, the proposed new dwelling would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling. Do I have a second?
Second.
Herb, seconds. Roll call vote on Natalie's findings. Herb, Boden Sieg?
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
Favor.
Natalie Pittinger?
Favor.
And I am also in favor. And then Natalie, any conditions?
Ah, yes, there are some conditions here. Let's see. We have to make a motion to grant special permit number twenty twenty five dash oh two seven based on findings with conditions.
You can just reference one to six. This, Mr. Hocker, 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 did you see those conditions on there? Are those all agreeable to what you guys have going on?
Yeah, I think it's basically. Yeah, we have all that planned out already. That was included, I think, in the plans that we that we submitted.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the only concern I would just, I just want to make sure your garage, existing garage. We don't sort of screw that up. The proposed redevelopment show further expansion of the dwelling or construction of a of accessory structures. I think that's okay because the garage is there and you're not taking it down, right? It's just going to be.
Correct. Yeah, and it's, you know, the accessory structure is prohibited without prior approval from the board because we, if they wanted to do an ADU, turn the garage into ADU or something, they have to come back for a special permit anyway because the whole lot is nonconforming is my understanding.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it would just mean if they wanted a shed in the backyard, they would have to come back to us too.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean. Okay, so you're okay with that?
Yeah, they have the garage currently.
Okay, just making sure. All right, so we have the item, the one through six from September eleventh, twenty twenty five staff report. All those, sorry, we have to roll call vote in favor of Natalie's conditions. Herb, Boden Sieg?
In favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
Favor.
Natalie Pittinger?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So you have your special permit.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good luck with the project.
Appreciate it. Thanks much.
All right, moving along. Correspondence, I think there was one item in the folder from the Cape Cod Commission. What was it? There was a Cape Cod Commission agenda for the meeting September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. And I think that's all. Anything else I missed, Anna, that came in?
No, that was it.
Okay, any matters not reasonably anticipated? And then Anna, October eighth, so that's like big and heavy right now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, how many items?
We have a variance that goes along with the forty B special permit, a comprehensive perm, comprehensive permit, and we have a a third application and I think it's pretty straightforward. But I think the forty B is going to take a while.
Okay.
And also I think that the the board is going to discuss a few items, correct? Continuances?
Yes, I believe so.
Rules and regs?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anna, is there a way to schedule the first two prior to the forty B or, you know, just so we can move them along and let the forty B people wait or?
You certainly can. So the the comprehensive permit and the variance are related to the forty B. And then the third item is pretty straightforward if the board wants to do that first.
I think we should, or at least let, or at least let the applicant know that, you know, we don't get that situation with Nickerson, you know, Attorney Nickerson, when he showed and and we sort of just dismissed him because of the hour, you know? I just, again, I just, if we have the ability to do that, I think we should certainly try to bang through the first one. Especially if we think that the forty B might be a two, three meeting hall, so to speak.
Most likely.
Yep.
Anna, can you do that on the agenda beforehand or we'd have to do it? Do we have to put it on the agenda in the order they came in?
We put it on the agenda in the order they come in, but at the beginning of the meeting, you, the board can can take that one, the the small one first.
Okay. Okay. You're muted, Aaron.
I'm sorry, is is putting the agenda together by order they come in sort of a, not a requirement, but something you've always done or is it just something that because again, the agenda goes out, right, two and a half weeks or for, you know, sort of the public notice? Can you, can you alter it if you so choose?
Um, not at this point. I think the butter notices have already gone out.
Okay, gotcha.
But but the board certainly can rearrange things. That happens.
Okay, yeah, well, we'll, you know, we'll see where we end, where we end with everything on the agenda and what's going forward on that night and then we can just make a decision at the beginning. All right, and then October twenty second, we now have this one and then November twelfth. And yeah, okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call vote on adjournment. Herb, Boden Sieg?
In favor.
Paul Pennard? Aaron Webb?
Favor.
Manny Als?
In favor.
Natalie Pittinger?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So we're all set.